February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the city council of Coldwater Initiative to order. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow the roll.
Councilmember Rissman.
Present.
Councilmember Mackin.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Knack.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwood.
Here.
Councilmember Pettsco.
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here. We are all here. Must be we're all here for Lisa's presentation. We have us on our agenda now for public comments. Anybody would like to address the council now, they may do so now or at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda, items that we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or someone in the audience wishes an item removed for further discussion or clarification. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have our minutes of February thirteenth, our housing commission minute of January tenth, DDA minutes of January twenty-fifth, our quarterly MERS statement for two thousand twenty-two, our annual MERS DB statement, annual statement, MERS statement for last year, and a letter from Keith Bildner, manager of the Branch County Fair, requesting permission to hold the annual Branch County Fair Parade on Saturday, August fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Those are the items on our consent agenda tonight. Anybody in the audience wishes anything removed? Anybody up here? If not, we would love a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Thanks Randall. Thanks John. We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number seven, bills and accounts. They're asking us to approve payment of a hundred thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. As usual, Tom is here. He's here. Any questions from council?
Motion. Support.
Thank you Jimmy. Thanks you Chad. We have motion, we have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number eight is the city manager report. Keith.
Hey, Your Honor, council members. Good evening, everyone. The first of which is just a brief recap of the ice storm event that occurred last week. The information is from Director Jakubzick, and that the BPU fared well. At the high point, we had about eight hundred and fifty customers without power, and those persons who could be restored were restored within a twenty-four hour period. And we wanted to express our appreciation to the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, who did send a crew for mutual aid. And tied to that is our storm cleanup. With the recent storm and the mild weather as it has been anyway, the city will begin collecting brush pickup next Monday officially for a month early, for the month of March. We've done a couple days of immediate storm cleanup late last week, but we'll make a full effort around the city starting next week, beginning our then monthly brush pickup. Residents can drop off their brush and yard waste. I see bags already starting to accumulate with the nicer weather, and those can be dropped off at the municipal services department at forty-five Industrial Lab during normal business hours. Wanted to recognize and congratulate Officer Robin Schwartz on her five-year anniversary. She is our school resource officer, and I saw a lot of social media, Facebook love for her out on social media today. So we'd like to thank her for her continued dedication and commitment to our community. Maybe something not so exciting to report, but property assessments, change notices did go out last week. The taxable value actually of our community and individual properties were limited to five percent, five percent being a large amount considering past years, but that was a maximum as established by state law because the actual market value increase for the state was seven point nine percent. And that was as a result of Proposal A, legislation that was passed in nineteen ninety-four. So it was the first time in which the maximum was reached, and the maximum being any one given year being five percent. For those that have questions about their property tax assessment notices, we have the March border review, which is coming up in two weeks, on the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, and they can contact our city assessors, Deb Sikorsky, Bernath, and Samantha Albright at the Neighborhood Services Department. And then lastly, for those that interact with the city, we have a relaunch of a redesigned city website that will go live this Thursday. And so everyone, we would recommend everyone look at www.coldwater.org and our new design and updated information and hopefully improve navigational function. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thanks Keith. Questions for Keith, anybody?
Keith, is there an update on the Spark grant for the Water Works Park project?
So yes. Unfortunately, we were not awarded. There were twenty-one awards out of four hundred and sixty applications. The state received four hundred and six, was two hundred and eighty million dollars worth of requests for a fifteen million dollar pot. So we're waiting, we're waiting our scoring and to see where we fell. And there will be two more rounds of that grant yet this year, but that information hasn't been publicized yet as to when the next due date will be through the DNR. And to what extent we might feel as though we're eligible or scored high enough for those funds. But yeah, two hundred and eighty million for a fifteen million dollar pot. And five percent of the applications were approved at twenty-one applications out of four hundred and sixty total, so.
That's for the Water Works project?
Yeah. So Director Jakubzick and Brian Musselman and I met last week and to kind of plan out the next, the next path forward. And so we're going to wait for notification from the state as to what the information is relative to our application and what the next application around is, and then come back to you. We'll inevitably have to request approval again to submit to the council. But at this point, we're just going to wait and see as to what the next step in the process is, and then seek your approval to apply again.
What percent was that of that proposed park reconstruction? How much was that grant going to be?
So the, it was, it was four hundred thousand out of a six hundred thousand. So it's two-thirds is what we were asking for.
Too bad.
Other questions for Keith?
I just want to say, thank you. You touched on it, but thank you to our BPU staff. And it's just another attribute of living in the city of Coldwater. We've got friends and family that are still without power. And if anybody doubts the benefits that you get for living in the city, this is one of them that I'm glad I lived within the city limits. So I'd just like to say thanks to all those staff and the city staff, and even Travis for being on the board over there.
So that was, that was a busy day for police and fire, just responding to the downed trees and lines. And then DMS was out helping with, with street clearance, and then the BPU, yeah, for power restoration.
Comment?
Right down to the brush pickup that's coming. It's just, you don't get that anywhere else. There's people dealing with a lot, so.
Any other comments? If not.
Move to approve the city manager's report.
Thanks Mike.
Thanks Travis. We have motion and support to approve our city manager report. All in
favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number nine is a letter from Lisa Miller, our economic development director regarding the Heritage Park Tennis Court resurfacing good.
So she drew the short straw for being the staff person to put this together?
Mayor Kramer and council members, thank you for having me. Time flies when you're having fun. I was part of the team that raised the money for the new park tennis courts, which actually opened up on the sixteenth of two thousand sixteen in August. And seven years later, we are looking at having to resurface our tennis courts, which we know it's usually a seven to ten-year event. So we have gone out for bid. We received two bids for that. We have some really bad spots on courts three and four, and we're hoping that through this, they'll be able to make some improvements and really trying to determine how we can stretch it out to get closer to the ten-year mark next time around. We have had a lot of people roller skating and doing things on the courts that I don't think have helped keep that surface on. So those are things that the tennis community continues to work with. So with that said, I am requesting, we are requesting, to have those courts resurfaced. And in your letter, it shows the two bids. The lower bid is almost identical to the more expensive bid. And with that, the tennis community, through our fundraising, had money set aside for this event for seven years later, seven to ten years later. So they would be putting twenty thousand dollars towards the seventy-two, nine thirty-six, and then we'll have another ten thousand held back to try and have it be more than ten thousand dollars in the next seven to ten years to go again towards resurfacing that we'll have. And again, every seven to ten years for the life of the courts. Are there any questions about the bids or about why it needs to be done? Or the fact that seven years flew by so fast?
I do have a question. Does the school contribute any? Because I know, or is that part of your, kind of, contribution?
Well, they, so the school in, put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the construction, and the city put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we raised the rest of it, and it was like, it was just under a million dollar project. So they had put in initial amount, but I don't believe that, I think of the agreement, if I recall correctly, and Keith can.
Right. So the contract.
It was a, they were not, they did not, part of that money was not to have the contract or be participant in the resurfacing.
There is an agreement that was established when those courts were constructed that the city became, city owns them, the city maintains them under that agreement. The school district, after the initial contribution, contributes replacement of the, of the nets. But other than that, we maintain them for public use. Yeah.
Obviously, they get more public use.
As a percentage of time, yeah, the, the, the high school and middle school teams obviously play on them, but, but they're open year, mostly year-round.
Any questions for me? Do you all know that I don't play tennis? I just wondered if you knew that or not. I was thinking about trying to play pickleball, but total for either one, I think.
And it's time for these, it's only been seven years. It's time to put this money in them versus wait another two or three?
Actually, they needed to be done two years ago, but with COVID and everything that happened, the north side, like I said, courts three and four were really bad, bad enough that we got calls from significant donors from the original amount of money saying what's going on with the courts. And so that's kind of when we started this process, and then weren't able to do it during COVID. And then we also have a timing situation with, when the seasons are involved. So when we finally did get, we tried to push it out further. We were going to have them just like, almost like, just painted over on the white spots because they're not unplayable like they were seven years ago. But they look terrible. And when you have that kind of amount of money given by donors, they want to know why the court, the courts look like that. So we did push it out and as long as we could and through those, through those seasons.
Lisa, is the feeling that this will alleviate, because you mentioned courts three and four, will this help alleviate those problems so that hopefully seven years, five years down the road, or what, because you mentioned five years, five years down the road, we're not going to be seeing the same issue again?
So I, yes. And I also think that we have to make, we have to move, be a little more diligent about what other types of activities are happening on the court that can take off that top piece. But also, whether we enter into a contract situation with like a company like Racket Sports to have them properly cleaned on a more regular basis because you can't just go out and just do a normal power wash. There's a special piece of equipment that we've even looked at purchasing, the tennis community's looked at purchasing, but, or have it as part of our regular maintenance, have it done correctly because there's a lot of buildup on those two courts of, and with any tennis courts, not just ours, depending on where the sun and different things are, but you'll notice mold and different things. And that is the court that will have a little bit of water that will bubble down on it. But I don't believe that that's what this is from. So we just, not sure exactly what happened, but I think it's a combination of things. But like I said, seven to ten years, and we're at seven.
Are they, are they looking to maybe lock the courts or something when they're not in use?
So we've talked about that. We have, we have four openings that don't have fences on them. So we've looked at, you know, how you can put almost just a crossbar on it and then lock it. But again, that's when people just go in and use them all the time. And so we've had different ideas of how maybe we can monitor that better. I haven't noticed it as much the last year or so because there are people that would say, hey, you can't do that on the courts. But I do believe it was a combination of things.
Is it posted?
Mm-hmm. It is posted.
And the police have chased people off over time. I think we've gotten fewer complaints recently than a couple of years ago.
Not to worry. I walk my dog down there all the time, and I am like, making those calls.
Don't need the police.
Okay, as an expense we're probably going to be faced with every five to ten years.
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty-three to eleven.
Support. Do we have support?
Support.
John Pettsco, support? We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. And just one other thing, there was always a cost of maintaining the old asphalt courts also. Those constantly had to be redone, also resurfaced when they were asphalt. So it's not any, this is not something new. It's just a different type of maintenance.
I thanked her about five minutes ago, but okay. Thank you, Lisa, again.
Really nice to be here. Thanks. Bye.
Number ten is a memo from Keith Baker regarding first budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
So probably for the sixth year, I'll suggest that my name is on it, but Tom has done all the work. So it does, this is our first round of two annually, where we make adjustments to the budget to reflect changes in revenue and expenses through the first six or seven months of the fiscal year. And I think we have a positive report for you this evening. And with that, I'll have Tom go through some of the changes that are proposed.
All right. So we could start kind of summarizing. So our original budget basically has a deficit of one point, call it, call it one point seven million dollars. After these amendments, we'll be down to about one point two million dollars. Within those numbers, we've kind of broke things out between the unusual capital items and then the operational. So our operational deficit started at about a hundred and eleven thousand, has decreased down to about twenty thousand. The capital portion has also decreased mainly on the capital side. What happened, and you're aware of this, is we budgeted for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a fire truck. Fire truck still coming. It's just that only half of the truck, probably the chassis, is going to arrive in this fiscal year. Really, that big piece is we're just taking four hundred thousand dollars and moving it out of this year, put it into next year. Similar to how we've got a couple trucks that the DMS group has ordered that originally were budgeted for this year. Trucks have been ordered now, but they will not arrive till either fall or potentially into the winter. So those items have been moved. I'll go through kind of a summary of the big, big items and starting with the revenue. Some of the positives. Building permit revenue continues to be high. It's been high for the last couple of years. The apartment complex on Wilbrauk is definitely the contributing factor, both to last year's high number, this year's number, as well as a couple of the projects. The senior proposed apartments have had some money come in. One of our manufacturers is going to do an expansion, has had some money come in. So we're going to increase our building permit revenue by about a hundred thousand dollars. State shared revenue, last year, partly because of COVID, the state was a little behind in giving us estimates. So we had to use an early estimate for the budget. Since that time, we've had a couple of updates. So we're increasing our state shared revenue budget from one, basically one point three million up to one point five million dollars. Hundred and fifty thousand of that is actual money that is retained by the city. About seventy-eight, eighty thousand dollars of money that flows into the city related to the prison population at Lakeland, and then flows to the township, as we've discussed before. And also, something that was unusual last year that we were showing negative interest, if you recall, when interest rates have changed in the last twelve months significantly. And so I'm happy to report that we're seeing lots of positives on our interest. And so I'm going to be really conservative on the First Amendment, but I have increased our interest revenue budget from twenty thousand to a hundred thousand. I, I'm pretty confident that I'll be coming to you in two months and bumping that number up. We, looks like the Fed's got a couple more interest rate hikes to go. So it's, it's, it's one of those things. It's positive on one hand. It also causes us to have inflation, you know, we've had some higher inflation. And so there's, this is kind of an offset to some of the other things that are going on, supplies that we're buying. On the expenditure side, we've had, like we do generally every year, we've had a couple tax tribunal cases. One of them, one of our large box stores, it's happened to us a couple of years ago, where they've gone to the tax tribunal at the state level and won a reduction in their taxable value. So in this particular case, we've got taxes from two years ago that they'll get refunded. And in the current year, we've taken care of the current year, because I always leave a little cushion, but we'll increase our budget by fifteen thousand dollars for what we have to pay back for the prior year. Public safety, that's been a challenging area this year, retaining staff. We, as you know, you approved the contract, we hired a couple recruits, sent them to the academy. They've graduated from the academy, are now employed by us. We paid for their training. So we've added twenty-three thousand dollars to the training budget for the police. The offset to the increase in the building permit revenue is because we have to pay contractors to actually do that work. So we're, we've increased our revenue by a hundred thousand dollars, and we're also increasing our expenditures by fifty thousand dollars. We've, on the DMS side, we were pretty conservative with the original expenditure budget. A couple of things have come up with the soccer project that will be starting this spring. We, they needed some extra material, and so they've been, they had to hire a company to come in and grind compost. And then they did some large material grinding as well. So we've added twenty-two thousand dollars to the budget for that. If you recall, Bob Granger came here a couple of months ago, and we routinely budget every year for heat pump replacement. Sometimes we don't actually do the work, but we throw it in the budget. This year, we are doing the work. We're doing extra work. And the fact that the heat pumps in play are in the roof means that it's going to be, we're going to do more heat pumps, and we're going to have to go in and, and make a hole in the roof, I guess, to get there. So it's going to be more expensive. So we've added money to the budget to take care of that. We've added repair and maintenance money. We take care of, we've got a couple fire trucks that have had to go in for repair, as well as our, one of our DMS trucks, and then our, our grinding machine called the Beast. We are increasing the budget by seventy-two thousand dollars relating to turnout gear that we're purchasing for the, for the fire department. That was part of the contract that we worked with them on last year. As mentioned, on the capital side, the new pumper vehicle is coming in. We are taking essentially half of that number, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, moving it to next year. So it's coming out of this budget. Because of that timing, moving that to the next year, also taking these two DMS trucks that I mentioned, pushing them to the next year, we moved into the current year budget. What Dave Smoltz had, we talked about an SCBA contamination washer. That was something we were thinking about for two thousand twenty-four, but because of the availability apparently of that equipment, we've added it to the two thousand twenty-three budget. So we'll try to get that in for the end of the year. Last couple of things, sidewalk program. We've got money budgeted for sidewalk work, but we have, in conjunction with the road work that we did last fall, identified some, some areas that you've approved that we're going to increase. We're going to spend about a hundred thousand dollars on that project. We had some in the budget, so we're increasing the budget by seventy-five thousand dollars. And then, of course, the soccer, soccer field project that will be, being, happening this spring. That's thirty-five That's $35,000 that we have increased. What I haven't included here is the Monroe Street bathrooms yet because we're a little, at least right now, I'm a little unclear on the timing of when that's going to get done. So whether we come back and add that into the second round of budget amendments or we leave it in 2024, that's, that's a project that's going to happen. It's just a matter of where we, where we, what timeframe we put in the budget. I would, at least right now, I would expect to come back in a couple of months and hopefully we would have continued positive news. But we do know, one area that I haven't touched on a whole lot, I think everybody in this room is where we, we have a number of open positions. And open positions, the longer they're open, even though it's not really a positive for the community, there are some, some wage benefits, at least temporary. They're definitely always temporary, um, both in public safety and in a few of other neighborhood services areas. So, um, we have not, I haven't done any factoring for those yet. But we expect, whether we actually formally amend our budget, we expect that at the end of the day, that our overall wage expenditures will be lower than what our budget was. Any questions?
Scroll down to the.
We're still waiting on pop money, right? Weed money to find out what it's going to be in March.
So yes, so in that particular, with last year, I believe we got 320 or 338,000 dollars. We do not have that in the budget because essentially how that works is it comes into the general fund. We'll show the revenue and then the idea, if we continue to do the same thing that we've done last year, we will move that into our capital projects fund budget. So for the general fund, it's essentially an in and out. At least that's how it was last year.
But we're.
Right there is a good spot.
How many more licensed establishments do we have this year than last year? What was the count?
Keith, what, uh, we talked about this year.
So we, we got credited for six the first year. I think we'll be credited for either nine or 11, depending on where they were with the state this year, so.
I think we're hoping we have more licenses, but from things that we've read, maybe you've read too, that the, the market has significantly dropped. And so the revenue coming into the state, there's more establishments, but not necessarily more revenue. Or if there's more revenue, there's definitely not more revenue per license.
Our percent is based on the amount of establishments. So if it was $10 million in sales in our, we were 338 last year, but we have 40% more establishments, in theory, we would get 40% more.
Right.
As, as long as the revenue even just stays the same.
And I think we may find that we have more establishments and we have less revenue. And so I won't, had your guess on whether we're getting the same. But we have competing factors there.
They say the state revenue is down statewide?
Well, the, the, the price for, for marijuana is, is down, but the sales continue to grow. I mean, statewide, the tax revenues have continued to grow. It's just whether or not the number of licenses that are out there will, um, divided by that total sales price or tax, tax revenue will, will equal more or less than what we got before. So we got about 58,000 per license last year. You don't know whether that's going to be more or less per license this year until you know the, their formula after they've subdivided it among all the different entities that get a piece of the pie.
That's a, yeah, that's a, a, something that's, we'll find out in March, I believe. It's not too, too far away for that particular item.
So Tommy might just, um, the bottom of this.
Yeah, for those of you that are kind of in the spreadsheets, you can see, if you look more in the middle, you see the, the negative, the 1.660, that would have been our original budget. And below that, you can see the makeup of that is, you know, 1.550 of, we'll call it large scale items. Then the operational of 111,000. You see the next column is the change and then the final column is where we are today. That's why on the bottom line, you see the operational deficit go from $111,000 down to roughly 20.
And so our total budget about for the year combined?
That's the deficit of 1.234, 1,234,000.
Total combined budget.
So 11.8.
11.8 is the number.
Kind of a total. But that's inflated because of the, the larger number, the larger one-time items.
Right.
Good report, Tom. Any questions for him? Try to look, motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Motion. Support.
Travis, we have motion on support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Uh, number 11, a presentation by our fire chief of the 2022 annual fire department report. David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's always a pleasure to have an opportunity to come to you each year to talk a little bit about the organization and have that opportunity to tell you what a great job the, the men and women of the department have been doing. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at the entire full report. Uh, because what I did here for tonight was pull out some of the highlights just so we could kind of hit the high points and not kind of drag this out. So to start. Oh, Shawna.
Third floor.
There, but I'll just do it.
Yeah, go to the next one. That's cool. Is there any way we could put it back up on here? Any way you could put it back up on here? We actually tested this earlier. I forgot my glasses. I can't, I can't read. Beautiful. All right. Outstanding. Thank you. All right. So to kind of go over some of the highlights for 2022. As, as Tom alluded to, one of the biggest things that we're proud of is the support that you gave us to provide funds to purchase our new engine. Uh, we expect to take delivery of that sometime in the fall of '23. Uh, as, as I've said before, that's, that's not a guarantee. Uh, as of right now, the chassis have not heard whether or not that has hit the line yet. At this point, we have not been bumped according to the manufacturer. So we're still, we're still in process. I actually would have hoped by this time we would have started that build process, but, but nothing so far on that. We've continued to work on our goal of reducing the cancer in, in the department. Again, with the, the help of the SCBA washer, the new hose washers we had over the last couple of years and washing machines, and then the new turnout gear that's going to allow us to rotate our gear in and out and get that professionally cleaned, which is, which is fantastic. Uh, training continues to be a priority for us. We've been able to send people to off-site classes. One of the places I like to send our firefighters to is the National Fire Academy out in Emesburg, Maryland. Uh, you can't get better training than, than people that come in from across the country to, to teach. And the cost is, is really outstanding. The only thing that we encumber as a city is just a meal ticket for the week or the two-week class that we're out there. And at most, that's about $500. So we don't pay for travel, anything, any of the expenses, any lodging. It's all covered underneath the, the National Fire Academy. Uh, Fire Marshal Trall, he obtained his evidence collection technician certification this year. Uh, he put in hundreds of hours of training to accomplish that. And then we received grants and donations totaling roughly about $1,600. So just, just to dive right into this, start looking at some of the statistical data that we've done over the last year. Our total calls were 1,310. Uh, it's down a little bit from, from the year previous. As I've said in past presentations, uh, with, especially in, in my business, it's, it's an up and down. So you'll, you'll have years where it's low and then you have other years where, where we're kind of high. Um, and the graph is a little misleading and it's just the way that it's spread out. But at least for the last five or six years, we've been over 1,300 calls a year. So I don't anticipate that necessarily dropping. To say why we came down from last year, that's, that's hard to say. There's no way I can put a, put a magic bullet on, on that, just a little less for service. Uh, I always like to try to show what each one of your wards is doing over, over the year. And ward number two seems to be our busiest again. That seems, the ward seems to fall. Uh, it's, it's not that any one is, is worse off than the other. It just happens to be that's where a lot of our calls fall into and the way ward two is set up. So we run a lot of calls, just even that intersection there of, of Willow Brook and 12 for car accidents. Um, it just happens, most time that just lands in, in ward two where we put it. We, we run the Myers a lot, um, a couple of the apartment complexes and so on and so forth. So, um, it just happens that's, that's where that lands. And then coming in after that is going to be our ward number four. Lot of apartment complexes in there. Also ward number four covers a little bit of that stuff on the north side of 12. So you have some residential, plus all the commercial down in there. But it's always a good thing to see kind of where our, our calls land in the, in the different wards. Uh, so with this slide, I wanted to always try to do is just kind of break it down a little bit farther for you. You take that 1,310 calls and we kind of separate that out. And these, the, the categories are based off of what the National Fire Incident Reporting System that we report to kind of has us categorize them. And I've combined a couple, but for example, for the fire suppression one, that basically is anything that was either on fire or was put out or we have to actually do some sort of suppression efforts towards that. So we are down a little bit from this year, from last, from 90 down to 72. But the average is still 66. And if you look across the, the board there, that's, that's pretty, pretty spot on for us. Again, it goes kind of up and down a little bit. The rescue and EMS on that one, that also combines our car accidents in there as far as the numbering system goes. Um, those are still down a little bit from last year. My personal opinion is, I think some of the COVID stuff, we're starting to come out of that and I don't think we're having as many EMS calls for, for that example. Um, and then really as we start to slide down, everything else seems to be pretty, pretty much spot on. Shawna?
David, what is service calls?
Could you slide back, Shawna, then? So the service calls would be, where like we go for a lift assist. So when somebody traditionally, say, lifecare would get called for somebody that needs help up. All right. We'll get called to do those now more often than not. So most of those, to be honest with you, in the service call category is going to be my, my lift assist. And you'll see that in a couple of slides up where, where that lands. I think it's like 56 off the top of my head without seeing the slide. Um, a service call could also be where we go and change, like, out a smoke detector or something, something like that is where that, that lands.
Same line. What's a good intent?
So the good intent call is going to be where somebody says, we think we smell smoke or we think we have an odor of, of natural gas. Uh, we'll go, we'll go take care of that. Or, um, oh, sometimes a, a wire down might be a good intent call depending on what we have.
What differentiates that between a hazardous condition?
Well, hazardous condition then, so hazardous condition would be, and the, the thing about the, the numbering systems and the, and the reporting, it's very arbitrary, right? So one person might classify as, as a good intent, might classify as a hazardous condition. So for the hazardous condition, might be if we actually have a natural gas leak where we get there. So somebody calls up, hey, I have, I smell gas in my house. We get there, we go in with our monitors, that, we don't have anything. So that's a good intent call. Oh, yep, you got gas. Now that's a hazardous condition call.
These designations are made after the call.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. This, this is purely off of what we report on our, on our annual, or I should say, the, the daily reports that get sent off to the state and to the national. Uh, the slide is showing a, a little bit of what we do outside of the city because we do protect Gerard Township and Coldwater Township. Uh, Coldwater Township, of course, has more calls than, than the other two. Uh, last year, Coldwater Township, I did, I believe did 105, but they're usually averaging anywhere from 85 to 105 over the last couple of years over where we stayed. And then Gerard Township is pretty spot on where they're at. Little busier year last year, I believe we did 56 calls to them. But they're, again, over the last couple of years, range anywhere in the 30s and the, the low 40s for them. And the mutual aid is pretty much right where we'd expect it to be even with the automatic aid.
That doesn't add up. So those calls are what, just fire calls?
Correct.
Actually, okay.
Yeah, 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 exactly. So, yeah, this is just, just four. So you got just the fire calls for Gerard and Coldwater Township. But now some of those, like in Coldwater Township, uh, eight or nine of them were actually EMS calls that we actually shot out for. So has nothing to do with, with that overall. So, yeah. So this slide again takes it even a little bit deeper down into the, to the weeds. We're talking just about structure fires, chimney fires, and then our cooking fires on the stoves. So the last four years, we've been averaging over 40 of those types of calls. Uh, we're a little about two less from, from last year. Uh, '21 was an absolute big year for us as far as working fires. So we're, we're staying pretty, pretty consistent. We're not, we're not jumping up too high. This slide kind of takes us in a little different direction. Always like to show what we're doing as far as trying to keep everybody safe. The two injuries that we did have to firefighters in '22, actually recorded out on I-69, uh, was a semi-fire and we just got a little bit too close and tires exploded and a couple of guys had some ringing in their ears. So we, we had to record that because it came as an injury. But, uh, other than that, we haven't had any, what I'd consider any serious fire ground injuries, no civilian injuries this year. And thankfully, we have not had any casualties in, in quite a few years. And then as far as our property value goes, we had about $7.4 million of property that we responded to, uh, that we had to mitigate. And we were able to save just about $7 million of that property. So an outstanding job by the, by the crews. So as we look at the EMS calls, EMS calls are again down for this year by 6%, but it's only really 46 total calls from, from the year previous. Uh, I would say we're, we're pretty steady on that. Again, I think some of the changes, why we have dropped again is, is because of the COVID. And then I also think that some of the, the changes that we have made in not responding to, for example, maple lawn or some of the doctor's offices around the hospital because I've made the decision that we didn't want to duplicate the resources. They already had medical staff on, on site. There was no reason for us to go. However, the caveat is there, if lifecare needed us or they were delayed and let's say it was a cardiac event, they would then tone us out and then we would respond to, to give that extra hands-on personnel. As we look at some of the more specific calls within the EMS realm, our cardiac arrests are at 24 and that is actual cardiac arrest. That's where CPR was being performed. So we've stayed pretty consistent in the 20s for the last four years. Uh, chest pains have, have dropped a, a bit. Uh, difficulty breathing has dropped, stroke. And then there's where I was talking, Mr. Mayor, on the lift assist. We had 56 of those, um, a gigantic decrease from, from '21. Uh, when I actually was putting together the report, uh, I actually figured that we were going to be upwards about the 100 again, just based off of when I hear calls coming in and out. But, um, we dropped back down into, back down into the 50s. So, yeah. Shawna?
It's not moving.
There we go. Okay, response times. Uh, so response times are very important to us because particularly in a fire event, fire is going to double in size every 30 seconds. So we try to make sure that we're getting to a call within four minutes within the city. Six minutes for cardiac arrest or in type of EMS call. Again, we need to be there within that, that four-minute timeframe. As you see though, in '22, we kind of jumped over four, over four minutes. And the question was asked, well, why, why was that increase? Really the thing, one of the things that I think I can kind of nail it down to is again, it's, it depends on where these calls are landing. And we're running a lot, it seems to be, out east of town. And traffic, in, in our opinion, um, has definitely increased. We get, we get bogged down and we have to slow down. So I think that's part of, part of the reason why. And then sometimes when it comes to grabbing the numbers for response times or our turnout times, so on and so forth, it is really dictated by when we key up on the radio and when the dispatcher has the opportunity to hit that button and timestamp it. So there is some delays there and we are working towards trying to improve that. But our overall average, we're still under four minutes within the city. And I think that is, that, that's an outstanding number where we want to stay with. Coldwater Township and Gerard Township, again, just the extent out there, that makes it a little bit harder. And depending on where in Gerard, for example, as you can see, those times fluctuate. Maybe the calls in one year were on the southern half, the other half were on the northern. So, um, again, it's kind of arbitrary, but I try to say, let's look at the average over a couple of years. I don't think you give yourself the benefit if you're drilling down into one year and making decisions off of that. I think it takes a, a few years to have some good averages. Overlapping calls, so we've been tracking this now for the last couple of years and, uh, particularly paying, paying more close attention to, to what's happening as, as of late. So overlapping calls basically means is we have, uh, our crews committed to a call and then another call comes in. How many times does that happen? So as you look at our percentages, we're at 16 and in 2022, it doesn't seem like a lot. So what I always reference people to is the number of times that we've actually had. So 207 times we had where we were already engaged in a call and then we either had a second or a third call that had come in. And then you have to ask yourself, okay, how, what, what was the impact of that? Well, we've been lucky. The impact has been fairly minimal. We had the one call where we were, our crews were tied up with a respiratory arrest and then we had a structure fire come in and we were kind of delayed to get there. But that's going to, in my mind, it seems to keep wanting to increase. The question is, why is that? I believe that we're, we're experiencing things where we're staying on scene a little bit longer because we're having to wait for EMS transport. We, we just have to, we can't. because we're having to wait for EMS transport. We, we just have to, we can't abandon the patient. Now, if the patient is stable, what the guys will do is we'll leave one staff member there and then we'll respond with the rest of the crew and, and the engine to go, go mitigate the situation. But sometimes, like the other day, we had three calls all at once. So we actually, we left a firefighter with the patient, the other crew went off to the chest pain and then myself and the fire marshal took, uh, took another, uh, difficulty breathing. So, you know, we're trying to plug it, plug into those holes, but we do, we do run into these. And as of right now, we're just at nineteen percent of, of overlapping calls for, for twenty-three. So we'll have to see how this continues to play out. Uh, and since days of the week, uh, it, I, I say this every year, you know, take, take these numbers for, for kind of a grain of salt. Um, we can never predict when calls are going to happen, but if somebody said, what's your busiest day? Based off of Statistics Friday seems to be our busiest day with, uh, with Monday coming in second. And surprisingly, Saturday and Sunday are on the, on the low ends. Uh, time analysis, so what times during the day are we the most busiest? And then you wouldn't think that right around three o'clock in the afternoon would be that number, but that is, that's where we seem to be the most busiest. Um, eight o'clock in the morning is when we start to, uh, actually tick up and then it starts to fall down roughly after, after three o'clock. So training, as I said, training is one of the most biggest important aspects of, of what we do. We have to maintain a state of readiness at, at all times when that call comes in. You have, when you get on scene, you have thirty seconds to make sometimes life and death decisions with a third of the information. And that training that we put so much effort into hopefully fills that gap. With ISO, uh, to, to get full credit, I need to get a hundred and ninety-two hours of training per employee. And we've done an outstanding job over the last couple of years of doing that. So as you can see in twenty-two, we averaged about three hundred and eighteen hours, uh, per, per employee for training. Now, when you look at the overall score, we have reduced a little bit. Now, it's not that we did less training, it's just that we had a few extra, or a few less parpaids. And then I had, for sure, I had one career person that was off for six months for, for back surgery. So we're still putting in a ton of hours and that's why I think the average is, is more important than maybe the total hours. Uh, this, this is a little bit of, of the operational side, but mainly a lot of this stuff falls on the fire marshal. Uh, Steve Trall, he's a, he's a one-man band on a lot of this stuff when it comes to the inspections, the re-inspections, the plan review. Um, but what I wanted to, to highlight really on this too is our, our smoke alarm install project that we do. We install free smoke detectors for, uh, the citizens of Coldwater, uh, Gerard and Coldwater Townships. And those smoke detectors are provided to us through the state of Michigan, the Fire Marshal's office, and they get their money through grants. So we're able to provide those at no cost to, to the citizens. Um, they come in, they ask us for smoke detectors. If it's less than two, we give them to them. Anything more than two, we go out and we personally install those in, in all the houses. And that's the same with the carbon monoxide detectors. However, those aren't as readily available. They're a little more expensive and we can only get those on, on donations through the same program, the Michigan Prevention Program is what we, what we use that for. And then we've reached, uh, you know, again, eighty-seven hundred people and enough all of our prevention programs throughout the year. And then kind of bring it up to, uh, to our goals coming into, uh, to next year. We want to try to explore some, uh, more prevention stuff, maybe in the combination with, with the BPU. We, we've kind of tossed around some ideas and maybe bringing in some electrical safety and things like that when we're out doing our, our safety trailer with the, with the kids during fire prevention week. And then for the last couple of years, we've really been trying to collect money to get a fire extinguisher trainer so that we're not actually having to use live fire to do that. And when we go out and we train some of these industries and things. So the fire marshal's heading that up. Uh, the training, we want to continue to try to send our people to off-site classes. Uh, we think that's some of the best training out there that we can get from the, from the nation's leading experts. And then we want to place some emphasis on communications, hose movement and our forcible entry. Uh, my emergency responses, I want to continue to try to achieve some goals set by NFPA seventeen-ten. And then we want to, uh, find better ways to handle electrical vehicle fire, electrical vehicle fires, and then improve some of the EMS in Branch County. So I wanted to take just a, a few minutes because I think it's important for, for this group to, to hear what we have to say a little about electrical vehicle fires. Because when we start experiencing these, you're going to see, you might get calls and people saying, why isn't the fire department doing X, Y, and Z? We can't attack these fires like we can a, a normal vehicle fire, right? If vehicle's on fire, we'd get in, we'd hammer it, we'd put it out, no big deal. What happens with these EVs is that if it impacts the battery pack, which is isolated on the underside of the car, we cannot get at that. So those batteries start to go into thermal runaway. And what the industry is seeing is they'll be putting close to eight thousand gallons of water on these cars with almost sometimes no effect. So then you have to worry about the runoff and the water that's going down and how do we protect that? So the industry really is saying at this point, if we have that thermal runaway, we're almost letting the cars burn because that's the only way we can, we can really handle it. Now, the downside to that is now we might have to actually start to evacuate area because that, that smoke and stuff being produced is incredibly toxic to, to humans, right? So it's really put us in a, in a bind. But right now, our policy is if, if we have a thermal runaway in those batteries, we're going to let it burn until something in the industry is able to, to change for us. Once that's out, we have to use our thermal camera to make sure that those batteries are below two hundred degrees Fahrenheit before we even let the wrecker haul them away. But even then, we have to tell the wrecker companies, do not store these things next to other vehicles or next to a building because they can take off again. There's been cases forty-eight to seventy-two hours later where these batteries fire up again. Now their buildings are, are burning down. So it's, it's been a very challenge for, for the fire service, but I think it's important that, that this body understands that we have to attack these things a little bit differently in case you get calls and you're wondering why we're spending three or four hours out on a vehicle fire when it, it should be a quick ten, fifteen-minute job mop up and, and get home. So with that, uh, thank you for the time and I'll turn it over for any questions.
Nineteen percent is going to go up.
Right. Uh, yeah, absolutely.
They're good for the environment.
It's, uh, it's, it really, it really is. It's, I mean, the, the amount of webinars and stuff that's coming out from the, from the I Chiefs and then even from the IFF and it's, um, it's, it's making a lot of, a lot of news in, in my industry, hounding these manufacturers to think about, you know, you, you got to do something with these, with these batteries. And it's, we, we saw them with the smaller lithium ion batteries, you know, the little, uh, oh, the, the hoverboards that the kids would ride around on. We, those things would catch on fire, but we're able to get at that. This is such a contained unit and we can't get in there and try to break it or crack it open because that's dangerous for, for our people. So, um, it's, it's one of those, I think, where the industry thought about how they could solve a problem without seeing the problems it could end up creating as it went down. So, you know, we're talking about, let's say everybody starts to have them and I think, Mr. Beckwith, I think you, you have one. And, um, so what, what if, what if that car catches on fire inside of the garage that's attached to the house? You know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get close enough where we can hook it and yank it out? Because we want, we want to try to save the house, right? So we're having those types of discussions on, on outside of the box thinking, what, what are we going to be able to do? And how do we cut off the power? And so it's, it's quite a challenge.
Your comment about the industry thinking, if you read anything about technology, whenever it comes, there's always unintended consequences.
Absolutely.
I mean, the, the automobile was created because of the, a lot of support from the big cities because of all those horses. And what did you do with their dropping? Well, solved that problem, but created air pollution. So
Right.
With any technology, there's always unintended consequences.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Very, very good report, David. Uh, any other questions for our fire chief? We appreciate the update and we appreciate the professionalism. Um, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We don't really need to approve that, do we?
No.
No, we don't. Uh, we have a spot on our agenda for public comments. Seeing none, we are at unfinished business at our level. And then we move right to new business.
Um, I do have a question for, for new business. Uh, the notify me, the text message system that we have, I know it's primarily for like construction. I saw this, um, BPU put it out for the power outages. Do we have the ability to use that in case of emergency services? His, his comment about evacuations kind of reminded me of the Walmart incident with the threat a couple of weeks ago, as well as the, and the shoe shooting. Is there a way where we could utilize that notify me to, in the event it is needed, put out some type of notification to let citizens know to avoid certain areas due to, um, threats of whatever variety they might be?
Even the train derailment in Ohio.
Yep, train derailment in Ohio. I know I still get text messages from central Michigan, so I know there's a lot of things available like that. Just curious, if we have the ability to leverage that notify me?
Definitely. We have the ability. I, I can't, I can't recite to you what our policy is to what does and doesn't get, get transmitted, but I, I could follow up with you on that or follow.
I'm just curious, because my, my mother-in-law called me about Walmart and I'm like, she's like, I read it on Facebook. I'm like, I, I don't trust Facebook, but thank you for sharing.
We get an update on that, Keith?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll provide a.
Good idea. Any other new questions, new issues? If not, we're adjourned.